This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killingley Town Council, and I am calling this regular town council meeting to order. It is 7:00 PM on Tuesday, December 14th. Mr. Wood, would you open us up in prayer?
Heavenly Father, we just thank you again for this opportunity to serve the people of Killingley here. May we have wisdom, may you give us the sermon on the decisions that need to be made, that we make decisions that would be for the best of the people. We pray this in your holy name. Amen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance. Moving on in the agenda, we will move on to item five, adoption of minutes of previous meetings. Can I get a motion to adopt the minutes from special town council meeting October 5th, 2021, regular town council meeting October 12th, 2021, and regular town council meeting November 9th, 2021?
Patty George, I'll make that motion.
Ray, what else second?
Motion has been made by Ms. George, seconded by Mr. Wood. Discussion, comments, corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. We'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, presentations, proclamations and declarations. 6A is presentation of plaques to outgoing counselors, Ernest Lee and Mark Lepreid. Mr. Lee, I believe, is still on vacation, well deserved after his two years on the council. And Mr. Lepreid is here with us. As Chair of the council, I'd like to thank both Mr. Lee and Mr. Lepreid for their time on the council. It is definitely a, in a sense, volunteer position for all intents and purposes. And the amount of time that you've sacrificed and given to this town to help this community is very commendable, and we thank you for your service. Moving on in the agenda, item seven, unfinished business for town meeting action, and we have none. Moving further on to item eight, citizen's statements and petitions pursuant to the town council's rules of procedure. Article four, section two, all presentations by citizens shall be limited to an aggregate of 45 minutes, and each citizen's presentation shall not exceed five minutes unless otherwise indicated by a majority vote of the town council. Public comment can be emailed to publiccomment@killingleyct.gov or mailed to Town of Killingley, 172 Main Street, Killingley, Connecticut, 06239. Honor before the meeting. All written public comment must be received prior to 2:00 PM the day of the meeting. Written public comment will be posted on the town's website, www.killinglyct.gov. Ms. Clorio, I know we had one public comment that was submitted.
Mary Clorio, Town Manager, yes. We received one public comment emailed by Donna Bronwell, 699 Bailey Hill Road in East Killingley. Her first topic was she's supportive of the executive session item regarding solar panels on the landfill. The second item was with regards to the vote on the renovations for Westfield Avenue building. She felt the publicity was poor.
Thank you. At this time, I will open up to any public comment. Anyone who is here who would like to make any public comment, please step up to the podium, step up to the mic, state your name and address. If you would like to speak, now would be the time to speak. Last call for public comment. Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. Item nine, council and staff comments. I will say, I concur with Donna Bronwell that I have heard from several people in town who were displeased on the amount of information that went out regarding the vote on the community center project. I know, we tried, it was posted on several places. We did have the signs at both the high school and the Westfield Ave location during the municipal elections. The sign at the high school, when I got there, at one point, the information regarding the vote for the community center project was actually facing away from the entrance. I don't know if that, it had gotten turned around while I was there, and then later on, I noticed somebody had turned it back around again. Because I guess people were walking past the sign wondering where to vote, because the "Vote Today" sign was on the opposite side of it. I mean, Ms. Clorio, if you could just go through a list of everywhere it was posted. I know you had the three informational meetings. Very few people showed up for those, which is unfortunate. And I believe that as a council, we did as much as we could to get people out to vote.
So, the vote was put on our Facebook page. I did a number of interviews, and Winnie also did a number of articles with regards to when and where the vote was. I was on Winnie the day before the vote to also remind everyone to be able to come out and vote. Norwich Bulletin did several articles with regards to the vote to help us in getting that message out. We had it up on the digital sign at the library for a week. We had the Vote Tuesday signs out the Wednesday, you know, the Wednesday before. We had the digital board, we accessed the regional asset signs for the digital display boards to put them at both normal polling locations to have everyone go to the community center. One of the pieces that I think, you know, Donna had alluded into her comment was that she was asking about whether or not the town had a marketing or publicizing staff member or whatever. When it comes to capital projects, referendums, the town is restricted on publicizing or marketing, campaigning that item. So, we cannot expend any funds. Once the town council has set the referendum date, the town is no longer allowed to expend any funds on advertising. So, that's it. We don't have the ability to run ads in the Turnpike Buyer or in the Norwich Bulletin or run Winnie commercial spots, which is where normally people would expect to see advertising. So, we don't necessarily get to do that traditional path of advertising because it's considered a conflict in the state statutes for elections, right? So, we fall under the elections regulations. So, we use the methods in which we have available to us. And in some communities, they do look to access phone trees, and they have, you know, community groups that help by, you know, making phone calls to remind people to come out and vote and things like that. That's not necessarily something that we have necessarily established here in Killingley. Maybe it's something that we look to garner or harness within our community as far as activating those, you know, those resources in the future. I'm open to any recommendations, suggestions, ideas around how to get information out. I welcome the more engagement, the better. But, you know, we utilized as many resources as we had available to us in being able to make sure that the information was out there. You know, we always, as we put up things on Facebook, we always recommend or request our council members and other people throughout our community to share that. The more pages it gets shared on, the wider it gets spread on social media. But not everybody uses social media. So, we try and go with other avenues as well. But always, always open to new ideas around harnessing and getting that information out there.
Thank you. I know I had spoken with you about looking into the possibility of if myself as a council member could pay for Facebook ads and target the local residents, and you had told me that I wouldn't be able to do that. I do have one question, because you said we can't expend any funds after the date set for the referendum. Could we pre-purchase ads ahead of time or pre-purchase slots in, whether it's on Winnie or pre-purchase Facebook ads to where not so much encouraging someone to vote one way or another, but just to get the information out there closer to the date of the vote?
I would have to review that with our bond council as to whether or not that is an available option. I think that there is concern overall as to, so I recall that there was one referendum the town held. It was regarding a capital project, and the then-manager ran an ad in the Turnpike Buyer, so the cheapest one you could possibly get, ran an ad in the Turnpike Buyer that basically said, you know, "Now's your time to have your voice," right? For you to be heard, and this is the date and this is the place. And that was brought to the, yes, that was brought to the state, and we got, and we basically got reprimanded for it, that we were not able to do that. So, we're very cautious. I run all of those through our bond council to determine if we have availability. So, we can, I can explore that when, you know, when the next opportunity arises. But it's just, one thing that we are very cautious on is making sure that whatever we do leading up to the vote, we're not going to invalidate the vote results. That's the key thing. So, we need to make sure that we take whatever appropriate steps. And, you know, like I said, and I know in other communities, they have utilized, you know, community advocate groups that they have done those phone trees of, "Hey, did you go out and vote today?" You know, not what you're voting, but, you know, "Did you remember there was a vote out today?" You know, and they activated, you know, veterans groups or senior groups or, you know, other community groups that helped with that. So, you know, that's just another avenue for consideration down the line. But it's just other ways of getting information in a very, you know, everybody's lives are very busy and very full.
Mike?
That means you couldn't use mailings because it uses funds?
Correct. So, we couldn't send out like a postcard or something like that. We could send out that, we could send out information about the potential vote, the potential of a, see, all of this is before you guys set a date, right? So, if you start publicizing, "Hey, we're going to do this on this day," and then the council collectively decides to push it off another month, all of that information is invalidated, right? And so, it's difficult to say, to pre, because you're, you, the council hasn't made a decision yet, right? And you need to have the council make that decision so then you can actually tell people, "This is what's happening and this is when it's happening," right? Up until then, it's conceptual, you know? And so, the council can't say, "This is what's happening and this is when," until the date is actually set, right? So, those are, those are just some of the components, the restrictions that we have to live within when it comes to this. But again, it's, you know, trying to activate those different passages, pathways of getting information out.
Thank you. Ms. Grandelsky?
When looking at the regular election for our group and then the, on the referendum, the digital display boards were out like a week in advance, "Vote Tuesday." But at the same time, the referendum, you had "Vote" with a date. So, in some ways, we spent more effort to put on the referendum for the Westfield Avenue School than we actually spent for the most important election that we have. The Highway Department puts out signs a week in advance, "Vote Tuesday." I mean, that's by direction. I mean, there should be some more information out there. I don't know, they could print signs every single time to say what it is. Like, it doesn't say what it's for. Nobody knew that there was a municipal election was "Vote Tuesday." But come two weeks later, there was referendum, you know, a referendum, there was slightly more information on the digital sign boards. But I think we've got to do a better job of putting signage out for our regular, our regular elections, our budget vote. You know, put some dates on it, put it out earlier than one week in advance with some more specific information. I mean, we do have the digital sign at the library that you can change and do whatever's going on. But anywhere else, when they put the little tripod out or whatever they put out, it's almost useless. I mean, we should be more specific as what's going on within the guidance that we can do from the state and all of that. But if we're having a budget vote, it should say "Budget Vote." If we're having municipal elections, it should say "Municipal Elections." Maybe we're going to, you know, we're trying to use the sign for every possibility, but there's almost zero information. So, I mean, so we had contradictory things going on. You can put out information, you can't put out information. And I think because the votes were that close together, that was also a problem. People, you know, they just voted for the elections, and then, "What's going on?" And it was, it was, there was some confusion there. So, I think somehow, overall, when we have a vote, we have to do a better job, better signage, and then talk to the Highway Department. When they make the sign, it comes out of their budget, but this should be out of the registrar's budget. It's, you know. So, if anything related to the elections, we should put more money in the registrar's budget, discuss this in advance as to what they, they know the rules as to what can go on, and then it's passed on to the Highway Department. And then someone says about signage at the polls at the library. I didn't, I wasn't looking for it, but then again, the carpenters' union was there, and there was no sign for 75 feet. They were out like 25 feet in front of the building. So, a lot of things fell through the cracks.
Ms. Clorio?
If I can, just regards to the "Vote Tuesday" signs. So, in the several years that I've been here with Killingley, even as a finance director, we have, we've had a number of renditions of those TP, of the signs that we have put out, those sandwich board signs. Sometime, at some points in time, we had more information on there. What we were finding is that when you're, they're placed at intersections, people are trying to drive through intersections, they're negotiating traffic, they're negotiating other vehicles, they're negotiating direction of where they want to go. The human eye and brain can only absorb so much information when you're passing by. And so, we, it came down, it eventually got boiled down to "Vote Tuesday" because, and it got, and it gets put out on Wednesday, the week before, just to let everyone know, "You've got a vote coming up," right? So, to trigger, I have to vote on Tuesday, right? That was the reason. We added, and actually, it was by your request that we added the date, the second time around after the municipal election, was we added the date for the capital project one, and that was upon your request. You came to my office and asked, "Can we put a date on that?" So, we did that because it was so close. So, it wasn't, we didn't intentionally leave it off of one and put it on the other. We have traditionally, we have been using the "Vote Tuesday" signs now for probably the last five or six years. That's been about how long we've been using just the straight language of "Vote Tuesday," so that way it could be used in pretty much any scenario because typically, historically, Killingley, when we have a vote, whether it's a municipal election, whether it's a budget vote, whether it's a capital project referendum, they're held on Tuesdays. And so, it made the sign universal for all of those, and the methodology was to put it out the Wednesday before that, so that way people had that week to know that they were getting it. So, we'll gladly explore putting more information on it. It's just, just remember that when you're putting it, it's different when you're parked in a parking lot and you're seeing the sign on the corner versus when people are trying to travel through those intersections and grab the information. So, we try and put information, but information that people will be able to grab. So, I'll explore putting whatever information on there so people can read it. The more information you put on there, the smaller the lettering gets, the harder it becomes to read in literally, think of the fractions of seconds it takes to get people through those intersections when they're, when the light is green. That's what we're trying to grab. So, it's, it's that minute piece. But I appreciate the feedback.
I believe Ms. Murphy was first.
Yeah, I was reading Donna's thing as I came in, and I completely agree. I have a bunch of ideas, but I'm thinking, can we do a subcommittee on communications? Or would Mary do it and we sit in? And, because we have the information with the public, like, how could we make something like that happen? Because I'm very interested in some of the ideas, expanding on the website, the phone trees. Not just for votes, because that would be different. So, you definitely need to know the ordinances, but for like little events, I see like little Christmas things happening, and I didn't know about them, and I just think it would be a great thing. Like, how would we, is a subcommittee the way you would do that?
I think one way we could do it, and we have a little bit of time, would be brainstorm now. And when we have the Saturday meeting for the goals of the council, that's something we could discuss on that day.
So, you want ideas now?
No, just brainstorm now, get your ideas on paper.
Okay.
And then, we have the town council goals meeting coming up in...
I haven't seen a date for that. I was going to ask you if you were planning on doing that, so this is news to me.
We've historically done it during January, towards the end of the month, on a Saturday.
So, it's been done during, on a Tuesday or on a Saturday, so take your pick, and you let me know. Whatever works, I'll, we'll figure out what day to get it on. But yeah, typically in January is a goal-setting session. And I was going to ask, I was going to ask the Chair and the Vice Chair about when a goal-setting session would be set.
All right. And then, I think Ula was next.
In regards to municipal, state, or even federal elections, Election Day is always the first Tuesday of November. I've known that since kindergarten, and we did have a huge turnout, over 2,500 people. So, obviously, it must have been well advertised.
Anyone who hasn't spoken yet, Mr. Wood?
Just to curiosity, obviously, you said we can't expend any money. Would it be acceptable for any of us or somebody to write to the opinion part of the Killingley Villager, which is free, just out of curiosity?
Yes, so opinion letters, those are all free. You can do that. And that's why I usually engage our, our media in that way. I usually look to have like Norwich Bulletin, John Penny, or Winnie write articles about it as it's getting closer. Because it does, it helps generate that recognition and notice, have Winnie, have the Villager write an article about it. And I usually try and engage them. It's, it's free. It gets more factual information in there than just running an ad per se. And it allows people to really get more information. So, I was able to share more of the information from the informational meetings and the website and the links and all that kind of stuff in those articles. And that's how I try and engage the media for that.
Right. And I, yeah, because I, you know, I liked Ms. Bronwell's idea of Turnpike Buyer, because not everybody has the social media, but obviously, we can't expend funds. So, that makes it almost impossible for that. So, actually, it doesn't make it almost impossible. It is impossible to use that, unfortunately, unless laws change.
Ms. George?
Now, because there's elections for the Board of Ed too, is this something we could bring to them so they could actually, you know, get the word out on their end too? So, around, like what I'd say in the budget. And so, this is something that body could work on as well, with their communication?
Sure, respectively, you know, traditionally, you know, when it comes to the budget, traditionally, the council and the Board of Education take their own steps in, you know, champion, championing and advocating for their respective budgets they're bringing forward to the community. So, you know, that's, you know, a typical, you know, they try and make sure that their collective bodies, their constituents are aware.
Ms. Wakefield?
So, Mary, so basically, as counselors, we couldn't pay for it personally. And then, as the town, we couldn't. But if there was like a community group or a PAC or something like that, they could pay for advertising or mailings or whatever?
Potentially, yes. Okay. Yep. I would go, you know, if it were, I would double check on my bond council, but they can, an independent group. Right.
Thank you. Mr., or, did you have anything? Okay. Mr. Grandelsky?
Because it was interesting, the last, probably the last four days before the municipal election, the group of people that, whatever it was that I was talking to, they had no idea that there was an election like within four days. And even though we had, you know, the sign out, you know, "Vote Tuesday" or whatever. And I understand him, the more stuff you put on it, it's hard. You're going by, you're driving by. I don't know how we can do this. Luckily, for the municipal election, we had a very good turnout. It ended up being a good turnout. In a lot of cases, it's not the budget vote. Well, not so much. That's why I'm looking at those two, especially the budget, you know. On that one, I get a lot of, I get a lot of grief on that. How come nobody shows up? It's a huge amount of money, and the same thing is similar. We're not aware, and I don't know, I'm out all the time. There's a budget vote, there's a municipal vote, or it's a town council vote and Board of Ed, especially. I'd be two, you've got two, two bodies that were voting for you. Oh, I didn't know that. So, something that, you know, that if we're going to do something, I don't know, within, we're so constrained, that's the other part. But I'd like to be able to get out more information, however we can do. Now, the digital display boards, so those don't cost us anything. So, we can put, those could go out two weeks prior to or whatever, and then you could put a date on it or...
Yeah, so the digital displays, the portable ones, not the library ones, portable ones, those are, those are actually Demos Region Four assets. So, those are emergency management assets. So, provided another community doesn't request them or need them, or there's not an emergency in which they're activated, then we have, you know, we can usually utilize them. So, yes.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on in the agenda. The next item up is appointments to boards and commissions. Ms. Clor?
You have none.
Moving on, next item is reports from liaisons. Board of Education liaison, which is not present. And we have the Borough Council liaison. Ms. LaBerge, could you come forward, please?
So, good evening, and congratulations to you all. So, an email account has been created for all the council members, and we were asked to set them up. But we have to be careful with one person because she serves both the town council and Borough Council, and because our lists are integrated, you have to be careful as to which one you click on if we're doing town council or Borough Council business. And somebody else lost her paperwork and has to send hers up here. I did. No, no, mine didn't. I have to, I have to ask for the, for the information again because we've got it on this little strip of paper, and I knew it would just disappear somewhere. So, I have to get mine again tomorrow night. And there were, there's a few of the cameras had to be repositioned. They had a fisheye one in the, in the bay, and it just was a blur. So, they took that one out and changed it, and a couple others. We just weren't getting the angle of an area we wanted to see. So, so they moved those. And we do have these signs up, letting the public know that they are under video surveillance when they come around the building. And here on the south side of the firehouse, the green wood portion needs to be repaired, and so does the woodwork around the windows. So, we decided to get the window trim encapsulated for winter. But as far as, you know, scraping, painting, board replacement and that, we're going to wait until there's better weather rather than trying to do it now. And a subcommittee has been formed to create IT policies and procedure for our technology usage. And on December 1st, we held a public engagement meeting and received ideas on projects for the use of the American Rescue Plan Act funds. And we had also had some ideas. I can tell you that one of the things that really stood out to me from that is people that don't have access to Wi-Fi and that having a, you know, someplace where they could come in to use public Wi-Fi. And that having a public, you know, someplace where they could come in to use public Wi-Fi seems to be something that Borough and Town could use.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions, comments from council?
I had a question. I was looking for you and I couldn't find your website. Is it, is there a website or just emails now?
Just emails.
Still, okay.
They haven't got the website set up yet.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Moving on in the agenda, the next item up is discussion and acceptance of monthly budget reports. Can I get a motion to adopt the summary report on general fund appropriations for town government?
Tammy Wakefield, I'll make that motion.
Patty George, I'll second.
Motion was made by Ms. Wakefield, seconded by Ms. George. Uh, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item up is summary object based on adjusted budget for the Board of Education. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
Ray Wood, I'll make the motion.
Patty George, I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Ms. George. Discussion on this item. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item up is thirteen, correspondence communication reports. The thirteen A is a town manager's report. Ms. Clorio, if you could go over this, please.
Sure, uh, Mary Clorio, town manager. So I, um, gave you the, um, kind of the COVID stats. You can see that we have an increase in hospitalizations from, uh, November to, uh, the beginning of this month. And we continue to see case, cases increase. We're now averaging about eighteen and a half cases on a daily basis, which is up from, um, about twelve cases, um, daily cases averaging, uh, beginning of last month. So we're still seeing that, that rise. It's still not as high as where it was uh, January and February of last year. We expect to see it to still continue to rise through the end of December and into January before it starts to decline again. Um, but it's, you know, uh, similar across the state. Um, I will say that we're not seeing any or really hearing of any, um, movement towards any new mandates or restrictions or anything coming out of, um, out of the state. So, you know, as I continue, as we continue down this road, I, you know, I just continue to advocate to my employee, to the employees as well as, you know, the citizens to just, you know, hand washing, sanitizing and social distancing where needed. Um, I've asked NDDH, um, I, uh, councillor White had gotten a hold of me to ask about, um, additional breakdowns in demographics with regards to COVID positive case counts. NDDH does not have that information. Um, they cannot provide to me, you know, age ranges, uh, you know, age breakdowns of COVID positive cases. Um, so anecdotally, I can get that from, you know, our emergency, our emergency management and their, and emergency response team where they're telling me that it's predominantly the, um, you know, the, the younger range twenties, thirties and into forties. Those are the higher rates of COVID positive. But that's anecdotal. I don't have any actual hard data. NDDH doesn't have that information. They said in order for them to be able to provide that information, they are, they are looking to hire, um, an additional position that will be able to analyze the data that comes from the state to be able to break it down into those categories. Um, and I believe that they've put, submitted ARPA funding request for that position to several different, um, communities. Um, uh, Killingley, we have not received an ARPA request from NDDH, but my understanding from them is that they've submitted that request. I don't know if they've, if they've been successful with funding on that. So I've given you all the information, the breakdowns that we, that we do have. So, um, I do, um, I do have in here the, you know, both maps um, with regards to vaccination levels as well as COVID case counts. I included the daily case count chart. The, I gave the percentage breakdown for each of the age groups for vaccination, for fully vaccinated month over month. So we're still seeing an increase in that vaccination and, you know, sixty-five plus, we are really close to a hundred percent vaccinated on that, um, on that age group. And the other ones continue to, to continue to rise. Um, so coming off of COVID, um, there's a couple of additional things. The town, we were able to, we received two speed enforcement signs. Um, they're solar powered, they're port, uh, portable. They're fixed to a sign that's not, doesn't make them very portable, but they can be moved around eventually around the town. So we, I worked with our law enforcement department to, um, identify really, uh, the first two locations that would be most beneficial to begin with that program. So we have one out on Maple, on Upper Maple Street and we have the other one out on Cook Hill. Um, and it's really, it does provide feedback. So we do get feedback from the sign. It's not, you know, it's not a sign that can actually, uh, be an enforcement tool in which they can issue tickets or anything off of. However, it does give our law enforcement, um, specific data around speed and traffic volumes at certain times of the day and stuff like that. So it does help in being able to target when enforcement, um, would potentially be most effective. So, um, and it is a good reminder for people as they're traveling those roads when that sign is flashing at them to remind them, oh, wait a minute. I, you know, I think I'm doing the speed limit and then I see what it actually says I'm doing, you know, and that does tend to slow people down. So as, you know, it, they won't stay permanently in those loc, those locations. They will begin to move around town. So know that those will start going on to some of the, you know, more rural roads as well, um, which the more rural roads, it, it is harder to do speed enforcement on those because there isn't wide enough shoulders to have an officer pull people over in a safe manner for the officer and for the, the other motorists. So it's important that we, um, have additional tools. So that's a great tool that we were able to get and it was no cost to the town to get those, um, signs. Library fines and fees, um, I'm sure you probably also or may have seen, there was an article that Norwich Bulletin did globally about fines, with library fines. Um, some of the major libraries, um, in the cities have eliminated the fine system entirely. So our library director is reviewing this. We don't really receive a lot of revenue from fines specifically. We receive most of our revenue from services. So think copies, faxes, that type of stuff. So she's going to be bringing, she's reviewing that. She's going to bring me potential revisions, which I will then bring to the council for consideration before we move forward with anything. But it has, you know, it has been a hindrance and it is a difficulty for when they're interacting with the public. Uh, you know, there are many times when somebody comes to the library, they haven't been to the library in five or six years. They're there with their child, they go to take out a book and they realize that they got a thirty dollar fine. They weren't planning on having to pay a thirty dollar fine. And it's, they're usually upset because they didn't know that they had it and it's, you know, that not something they thought they were going to have to encounter and it, you know, it ends up turning people off from using the library, right? So that's not really the mission of the library. We want to have people using it. So, um, and it doesn't necessarily, um, it's not as, it's not a successful, um, way to re, to get your materials brought back, right? Most people will just return their stuff. Um, people that aren't going to return it, aren't going to return it whether there's a fine or not a fine. So she's looking at that. I'll bring that forward to the town council for, um, ideas. Redistricting, I did give you some information that we received from the state with regards to redistricting. Really goes over that global redistricting process, which is the state's process for, for redistricting. Essentially out of that email, the one component that I really wanted you to see was that because we have elections of council members at the district level, our process really doesn't start until March timeframe for that redistricting. And in the past, I did talk to Janice. In the, uh, the last redistricting that we did, a town council subcommittee met with planning and zoning to go over the town districts. And so since the towns, districts are set by ordinance, so this is by charter. By charter, it says the town will, um, set our districts by ordinance. So it was the ordinance subcommittee of the town council that met with planning and zoning to establish the redistricting for Killingley. So that would likely be the path moving forward, but, you know, we'll, we'll review that as we get closer. Um, but I just wanted you to be aware of that. Um, it gave you an update on the transparency software. We've identified, we've reviewed two, we've looked at four, we've reviewed two that would be useful. And, um, we're looking at potentially proceeding with one of them, um, ClearGov. Um, and they had a really great feature that had an open checkbook, which allowed essentially our check register to be available. None of the products offered like a drill down all the way to the actual transaction in the general ledger. They, they all stopped at a certain level in a more summary fashion. But this one did allow for an open checkbook. So you could see every single check that was written, um, by the town. So we felt that that was, uh, helpful. Um, again, we're really only exploring this right now on the town side. We have talked to the Board of Education. They are potentially going to be, um, implementing a new, um, accounting software, um, for their systems, which at that point, they might be more compatible for them to explore this at that point in time. But, um, we've had conversations with the Board of Ed as well. Um, our audit for this current, for last fiscal year that ended on June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one, um, we have done the, requested the extension through, uh, January thirty-first. I expect that we will be able to do a audit presentation to the council in February. The KMS renovation project, I'll probably, and the Westfield Avenue project, I'll probably steal a little bit of Kevin's thunder from the end of this meeting, but, um, the permanent building commission, um, uh, they selected Downs Construction for the construction manager at risk for the KMS project. Um, so Downs Construction and Antonazi has been working together on the, on the schematic designs. Um, Downs Construction provide, and, and Antonazi individually, independently costed out the project and then have reconciled those costs together to formulate a total project budget cost. And it is actually, the budget reflects the total cost of the project is under budget by two-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars. So remember though, that we are still at very schematic, right? So we still have to drill into a lot of fine detail, right? So, but we are under budget, which honestly is a really, you know, we were kind of holding bated breath because since the time that we got this dollar, since the time that we set the appropriation and we had those cost estimates, material costs have changed dramatically, right? So that was, it was very good news to see that we are still within budget. Um, so we are going to be meeting tomorrow with the Office of School Construction, um, to review the schematic design with them. And, uh, as a side note, um, Director Costa is no longer, um, with, um, offices, he's no longer with the state. He doesn't work for the state anymore. So, um, they have been, they have shifted the Office of School Construction back over to, uh, Department of Administrative Services, so DAS, it's now under their wing. So we'll be meeting with them for the first time um, in that trans, after that transition, but we're still meeting with the same team. So Kermit Thompson was, was the engineer that's reviewed these projects, both, you know, this, this project all the way up until now. So he's familiar with. And he's very thorough and, um, and very easy to work with. So Kermit's been very, very helpful. Um, Westfield Avenue, as you all know, the, the appropriation passed. Um, we have gone, we have, uh, gone past the appeals time period for that as well. So we now have a live project. Permanent Building Commission approved the issuance of the RFP for the architect. That's really our first step. We need to get an architect on board. Once we get the architect on board, we'll then begin the process of, um, hiring the construction manager at risk. Um, we are looking at potentially trying to do a, um, fast track on the roof project, on the roof portion of the project. We will see where really where we go with that. Because if there's too much rework that would have to do with the roof because of the, uh, brick veneer, then it may not make sense to try and do that independently. So we have to really look at that first, but our first step, get the architect on board, get, get the construction manager on, onboard and then roll from there. So that's, that's my report.
Thank you. Um, I do have a couple things. As far as the fees of the library on materials that are late, um, one thing I would think if it's not a policy we may look into is, um, canceling the fines if the materials are returned. That way, at least we're, if the materials aren't returned, we're recouping some of the money we've lost from the materials not being returned. But if they do get returned, um, then we're not out so much money. We're just out the use of the materials.
Yeah, and our, and our library director works well, all those things. We've, we have library fine amnesty day where everybody can just return their stuff whenever they want to, right? Um, she's dealt with people that have, you know, that have run into special circumstances. They ended up in the hospital for six weeks and they, you know, didn't realize it was going to happen. And it took them another four weeks before they were able to get back to the library. So, and she's forgiven all of those fines. She is, she is incredibly, uh, willing to work with anyone that comes in. Um, so that's why, that's another reason to really kind of relook at what does it really mean to have fines? I mean, overall, I don't know that we're really talking about a huge amount of money per se. Again, I think the library really makes, the, the revenue that they generate for the general fund is really more on faxes and copies and all of those service orientated things where people are actually consuming services in the library and less so on those actual fines. And, you know, we don't, we try not to do fines on, you know, like kids' books, you know? And you don't want to prevent a child from taking out a book, right? So she's really worked with a lot of those already. Um, so I think this is just looking at that overall methodology.
My only thought, and this is just my opinion, um, if we were to, to completely do away with the fines, I'd be concerned that there wouldn't be any incentive to bring materials back and we may lose more materials.
Um, and that was, that's always usually typically a initial gut response. Libraries that have, have eliminated fines actually do not see that in reality at all. The people that are going to bring back their books, they bring them back on a regular basis. Those that typically would have had fines, they typically fall in the same category. So it's, it's not necessarily, um, panned out to reality for those. And we're talking large libraries, New York City, Boston, you know, they're not finding that as a, as a, um, an actual reality that happens. So but always something to be cognizant of, because that was our first conversation around this.
Thank you.
I have one comment.
I do, I'm sorry, go ahead. I, I do have one last thing. Um, with, uh, Costas no longer being with the state, does that in any way affect our reimbursement for the KMS project? Because I know we were looking at seventy-two percent. Um, I know that was something he was on board with.
Um, so I would say that it, it, I don't believe that it impacts our reimbursement rate. We were slated for a renovate as new. That falls within the maximum reimbursement rate, which for Killingley is a seventy-two, seventy-two point whatever percent. Um, the only component that we're still going to be, um, which Kermit was aware of, because Kermit was part of all of these conversations with, was, was with regards to space standards. Um, and the, um, the additional square footage. So that'll be a conversation. And again, it, they're, you know, they're still vetting out on exactly how the oversight of that department is going to be. So, you know, I don't want to say that everything's in stone. But, um, the team that was under Costa is still part of this project. So it's not like we're dealing with all brand new faces.
Thank you. Mr. Whitehead.
On, on the library with the, with the fines, I think you're sending out a bad message to, to kids. I mean, without, without any, if you do something wrong, then there's, there's no, you hate to say penalty, but what are they learning? So it's okay just to keep going and okay, I'm going to take a book out and maybe to return it and there's, there's no repercussion. This is coming, I have five boys, so you can imagine the fines that I have paid to the library. But, you know, it's a learning process, you know? You know, we ask our boys, you know, where are these books? I mean, what do you do? So we make them do chores to pay for the, to pay for the fines. I just think you're sending out a bad message.
Yeah, and that's a great point to bring up. Um, I will say that a lot of the times it ends up just being the parent paying the fine and it doesn't actually trickle down to a learning experience for the, for the child. Um, so, you know, that's a balance to be had. What is the actual balance? Because it's really the adult that's responsible for it, for the, for the fines, not the child. Um, so we, the parent ends up being the one that is on the hook for paying those fines. So it's a balance. What does that actually look like? What should it look like? And that's why she's doing that full, full review. She'll bring me the recommendations and then we'll come and we'll talk about what is, what should Killingley's policy look like.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Murphy.
I had similar thoughts to Andy and I was, one of the ideas I had was, uh, two hours community.
community service, or two hours service in the library or something. Then the parent said, get in there and do what you're supposed to do. Like, that's the punishment instead of the money.
Mr. Wood.
I think overall, when it comes to the library fees, as Ms. Clorio's already pointed out, it's really nominal versus what they actually bring in first for providing different services and, you know, commendable to you for what you do with your voice and making them work for it, you know? And I think that just comes down to the individual parent at that point. I'm not, I'm not here to tell people how to parent, and I know you're not, obviously, too. But to me, it just makes no sense to fight over fines.
Thank you. Mr. Grandalsky.
I really like the speed enforcement signs. The day after, they went up on Maple Street, and I'm going by, and I always make it a point, I don't know why, that, right when I make the curve right before South Shore Road, it's like, wait a minute, what am I doing? So I was within, within the boundaries. And then I come up and I see this thing, and it's, and they're really good. The trailer thing that we would borrow or whatever, it took up a lot of space. We couldn't put it where we had to. This one, if highway has to move it, what does it take? An hour for them to pick it up? So it can be moved anywhere on a day's notice or even less. So if we got some issues, I think those two signs would help out a lot. And, you know, you're not going to get fined for it, but it's just a reminder. I think it's great. And at no cost, I mean, you can't beat it.
Yeah. And I know other towns have had issues with trailers. Motville had one that got completely destroyed in a hit-and-run. And then the town's out that money. If somebody hits that sign, they've taken a pole out, or a sign out, and they've done, yeah, yeah.
It's not much, so it's great. I think that's a, that's good.
If no one has anything else, I do have one last thing. Ms. Clorio, do you know the COVID confirmed case count? Does that include at-home tests? Because I know a lot, there's a lot more at-home tests available now. I don't know if that has anything to do with the spike in case counts.
No. So there's, this, this is only the rapid or the PCR. So this is not, does not count at home at all, because there would be no way for them to do the data collection on that. So this is only laboratory.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Grandalsky.
With regard to the redistricting, is there any correlation between the population and the actual voter, the number of voters? Do we have that? Does that number come out? Because the population determines how the districts are made. So we have that, what is the actual population?
Yeah, I don't have that information yet. So I'm very early on.
We don't need that yet, right? I'm just saying, but that is, that would, could be available with, that what is our actual population with respect to the actual numbers of registered voters?
Correct.
Seeing no further comments, we'll move on to the agenda. Next item up on the agenda is fourteen A, which was already tabled into the January 2022 meeting.
Correct. It's the regular meeting in January. So I believe it's January 12th or something. I think I was eleven, I think I was partly, partway through putting in the date, and I, I got pulled away on something. So you got one part of the date.
Thank you. Next item up on the agenda is fifteen A, New Business. Consideration and Action on the Resolution Adopting the Collective Bargaining Agreement between the Killingley Board of Education and the Killingley Administrators Association for the period July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2025. Can I get a motion to adopt this?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Cattula, seconded by Mr. Wood. Ms. Clorio, could you go over this, please?
So the Killingley Administrators Association and the Board of Education went through their negotiation process. This was the, collectively, this was the agreement that they, both sides agreed to. So the Board of Education approved this, as well as the Killingley Administrators Association. By state statute, the town council has thirty days as legislative body to, to take action on it. If the council rejects this, this agreement, it goes direct into interest, into arbitration, interest arbitration. So it's brought before the town council for your consideration and action on the item. But both sides have agreed to what's presented before you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions from council? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion? One abstent, we have eight, four, and one abstention. Ms. Murphy abstained. Motion carries. Next item up on the agenda is Council Member Reports and Comments. Mr. Grandalsky, could you start?
The WPCA, they had a presentation of a battery storage, electric storage from, I can't remember the parties involved. And so that it would reduce the heavy, heavy load, whatever it can. It would be monitored by the party who's putting in, who's putting in the batteries. They're made by, I think they're Tesla batteries. And they're going to be overseen by...
ConEd.
ConEd, yeah, okay, ConEd. And I don't know how ConEd remotely, ConEd's going to remotely kick it in, kick it off, or whatever, but it's at no cost, pretty much no cost to the WPCA. And the sewer project is, there's still a little few odds and ends, but it's pretty much done. And that's about all I have.
Okay. Thank you. I know, Mr. Whitehead, you're new, so you don't have any liaison reports, as well as Ms. Murphy. Mr. Wood? Oh, you do have one. Sorry. Didn't mean to skip over you.
I went to agriculture. The chairman said he had to step down at the next time they get elected. They got a seeds grant from DEEP. They're going to have classes, bone broth class and flower class and bee class. And they asked about, are they going to be able to stay at the Westfield High property? And I said, I believe so. Is that correct?
That's correct. Community gardens will remain at the Westfield Avenue property.
Okay.
We'll keep their gardens.
Thank you. That's my report.
Thank you. Mr. Wood?
No report.
Mr. Cattula.
Well, as a lot of what Mary had mentioned at the Permanent Building Committee, the architect and construction manager at risk was in and did a PowerPoint presentation, and they showed their anticipated swing space, how they're going to work with the, with it being a occupied space when school is in session. And a lot of it, they're going to try to do during the summer when the kids are out to try to jump on the remediation part of it. And they also, as she's mentioned, put out the RFP out for the Westfield Ave project, so.
Thank you. I attended the Board of Ed meeting. One thing that was brought up during the Board of Ed meeting, well, I was questioned as to why the maintenance that was needed on the elevator at the Westfield Ave project was, the Westfield Ave location was not included in the project. I did reiterate to them that we were not doing a renovate as new, that we were preparing the Westfield Ave project mainly for moving the community center over there. I did contact Ms. Clorio, as was requested by several Board of Ed members. What she had informed me was, it had been discussed between herself and the superintendent, and the superintendent had felt that it would be something that would be covered by the Board of Ed, partly because it's a maintenance issue, not a capital project. And also, if it was part of the project for the Westfield Ave location, renovation, that we would be looking at several years down the road, and that this was something the superintendent wanted to do sooner, rather than waiting a few years to do maintenance on an elevator. And that's all I have. Ms. George?
Nope. My two commissions are covered by Michelle, and I have my first BOE tomorrow night.
Thank you. Ms. Wakefield?
Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec was very, has been very busy. Frosty's big night out. Actually, I liked the way they had it set up this year, because usually I happen to work with Frosty very closely, year after year, and he was always out there and kind of hanging, hanging fire by himself. And honestly, for picture purposes, it's a whole lot easier if him, Rudolph, and Santa and Mrs. Claus are all in one picture. And breakfast with Santa went great, the crafts were great, the kids loved it. It was kind of like, it was, it's, it's like everything's slowly getting back, you know? But they broke everything, everybody had a time slot. They, they broke the, they sold the same number of tickets, but they sprayed, spread everybody out. And so it wasn't just these mobs all the time. So it allowed me, in between the kids coming into their, into these groups, to wipe down the markers and scissors and the tables, and so that stayed fairly clean. And I always made, I made sure that they had handy wipes, that they could wash their hands on the way out. And, but it was, it was really good, and the kids enjoyed it, and the parents enjoyed it. And it was, it was, it was almost like it used to be. So it was, it was really good. And we have another state championship football team, and it was an excellent game. They, the kids, the kids were great, the parade was fabulous. And the town, really, everybody got, got behind us, and we have a lot to be proud of.
I completely agree with that. I have spoken with Ms. Clorio, and we are working on acknowledging them and having something at the, at a meeting in January, most likely the special.
And then Chad Neil got his hundredth win with this. So, so.
And, and I am very proud to be a member of this town when we have such a phenomenal sports team. I mean, proud of the students. Yes, absolutely.
They posted in Killingley Athletics that we've taken twenty-two state championships, and since 2016, we've had at least one state championship a year. So.
That's amazing. Ms. Barkley?
The Housing Authority meeting was canceled. The historic district, they will meet, I believe, in January. I'm not on that anymore. But there was a special P&amp;Z commission yesterday. There were three workshops. The first one was a pre-application workshop for Douglas Construction. The attorney from New London representing Douglas Construction was there. They are applying, reapplying for zoning change from rural to general commercial. The original application was denied in October. The property is a hundred and eighty-plus acres off of Route Six, and it abuts rural residential properties primarily on Snake Meadow Road. They said the original plan had a lot of shortfalls, and there was a failure of the applicants to indicate how the zone change would fall into Killingley's plan of conservation and development, and what would actually be built there. They did bring a conceptual, designed for commercial development, and said that they increased the buffer for residential property to seventy-five feet while maintaining wetland and open space. They also stated there would be no expansion of public utilities such as water or sewer, except for electricity. However, there was a comment that, that wouldn't be appropriate, because water and sewer would be needed, and there's no way to access it on Route Six. The attorney also, and Douglas Construction said the decision should be based on the content, the context of the entire town, the general public welfare and tax revenue, and not only the residents in the area. There would be a traffic study that would be conducted, and the attorney also did allude to a distribution center. The members of the P&amp;Z had several comments to make, that the plan was no different from the original plan. There, it was actually no explanation of what would be built on the property. And it would be easier to develop the property using the current regulations and current zoning. And there was concerns with light, noise, and air pollution problems to the area. And despite bringing a plan, once the zone is changed, the developer can do whatever. So, and additionally, the property is in the middle of a rural property. So. The second workshop was on regulations to build a structure on unoccupied by the owner property. They are moving forward to define a personal use structure and to close any loopholes that would cause concerns to residents, such as deterioration in ISOs. The third workshop discussed the Five Mile River overlay district, either keeping it or eliminating it, eliminating the protections, because the entire Five Mile River is not covered by the district, and the protections extend greater than two hundred feet from the river. So it also encompasses wetlands. So they are going to review current regulations to see if the wetland regulations and the Five Mile River regulations overlap or have any gaps, and go forward from there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Cattula.
I forgot. I'd like to thank the Parks and Rec Department for Davis Park. That looks fabulous. I see people park there, taking pictures and whatnot, enjoying that. So I'd like to send a big thank you out to them.
I completely agree. So moving on to the agenda, the next item up is executive session. At this time, I will entertain a motion to move into executive session. It is 8:07 PM. Bringing the town council, the town attorney, and the town manager into executive session.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Cattula, seconded by Mr. Wood. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? This meeting is going into executive session.